It was, and we had stars this night, and I read down there. You know, I just, I realized I'm much shorter, which is already nice. And that would get the money from the government. Well, that's what made sense to me when I read over it. Okay. Yes, yes. And then I didn't look at it until after. There, like, this was pretty. Yep. Yeah. That's good. Running with this. We've learned everything that one's, but.
Good. Try it.
Yeah, we can try.
Try what works.
I'll try real hard.
Bewitched.
Yeah.
However she did.
Maybe if we concentrate. Hi, John.
How are you doing?
Oh, I have no idea.
This is about the week of us, this week's topic's been.
Oh, yes. Well, and it, it seemed like a good festival.
Well, we're good, we get more compliments, people anyway, yeah.
Good.
Downtown.
Good. Well, and I was barely down there. I was disappointed, I, I ran out. Excuse me, um, the last night, I thought it was going to be ten, and it ended at nine.
Well, you did that when everybody was standing, those were shut down.
Well, we did that, switching it from eleven to ten. And I ran out against the bourbon chicken. And I got there at minus four, and I didn't get no bourbon chicken.
Oh, did you? We had two of them. Put one in that corner, one in there.
Oh.
And they both went into the spots.
Oh, good. Yeah, it was a little different than where it was last.
They played up, being up in the state of Central City. They have a lot of down, they have a lot of down nights. At the end of the street, grass. You're supposed to get stuff over that way. Food, and then give me left down, you're in the track.
Yeah, okay. Well, and I was at the edges of it several times, so I, I looked down and saw.
And of course, we had more cars that way, and people, there was still people there.
Yeah.
A lot of times, they didn't know what's happening on the second.
Yeah. There were a lot of people that walked by my office and got food and carried it out. I was, I mean, lots of people. I kept seeing people I knew. Yeah.
It's too hot or whatever. We sell food.
Yeah, well, and a lot of that was during the day.
Not as much as some.
But they're, you know, good fraud, they're savages.
Oh, no. Don't know.
Called a meeting, the order, everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance and then a moment of silent reflection, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since our, uh, Kirk Matt is unable to attend tonight, I'll do a roll call. Councilman Eads.
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Hitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Traynor. Councilman Stoll.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackman.
Here.
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from, uh, June 5th meeting? Any corrections, concerns? All right, hearing done, all in favor to pass?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We do have a public hearing tonight, so if we could get a motion to exit regular council meeting and enter into public hearing.
Make a motion to exit regular council meeting and go into a public hearing.
Second. Okay, this, uh, public hearings for ordinance 151-25, it's, uh, sponsored by Andrew Hitt. It's an ordinance approving the plan of operation and governance, governance for the sustainable, sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, Sopac Electric Aggregation Program, and for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electric aggregation program.
Hello? Can you guys hear me okay? Okay.
Well, while they're doing that, I can introduce myself. My name is Phil Lepla. I am our deputy director and general counsel for Sopac, um, and based out of the Dayton, Ohio office. And so what we're here tonight to discuss is the electric plan of operation and governance. This is the first of two public hearings that's required on an electric plan of operation and governance. And regardless of whatever program a community has, they do have to have a plan in place per statute and per regulations to be able to have an electric aggregation program. And by statute, you have to have two public hearings. So this is the first of those two.
Hang on.
That's okay, I can, I can go without it if need be. So I'll tell you a little bit about Sopac or Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council. There we go. If you can go to the next one. Uh, so Sopac was founded in 2014, might have frightened, was founded in 2014 as a regional council of governments. Uh, it originally started as the city of Athens, county of Athens, and village of Amesville got together, uh, informed regional council governments to start an electric aggregation program. So we literally are governed by the communities we serve. We have a general assembly and also a board of directors that make up the representatives that govern Sopac. So whether you're the size of the city of Cleveland or one of our smallest villages, you only have one rep on the general assembly. Then we have a board of directors made up of the five largest population centers, uh, five regional reps, so each corner of the state and central Ohio, and then five at-large positions. Uh, we were formed to increase efficiency in local government, so we are a shared energy office. So we have shared administrative, financial, grant writing, legal services such as myself and our associate general counsel in-house. We also have outside counsel that we go to for more in-the-weeds kind of energy questions. And then, uh, lastly, we have a commitment to renewable energy as an organization with all of our member communities utilizing 100% renewable energy by default. Sopac membership, um, this is actually out of date as of about an hour ago. Uh, we just had our general assembly meeting, and there are now 47 members in Sopac, um, but these are a few of our current members. Some of the most recent are the city of Oxford, uh, the village of Rutland, uh, and then a couple of library networks throughout the state. Collective buying power is a big part of what, why we have these communities coming together. Uh, it adds to bulk buying power, so I like to jokingly say it's like Costco or Sam's Club for electricity. You're going and getting a better rate as a big buying block. Uh, but Sopac is AEP Energy's second largest customer in Ohio, only behind the city of Columbus, so, uh, that's, uh, a lot of buying power. Uh, we have 1.2 terawatt hours of annual load currently, that's getting, actually approaching 1.5 terawatt hours, so that's a pretty big number at this point. That is just on the electric aggregation side. We also have a public pricing program, uh, that has, um, some of those other political subdivisions that utilize that. But our mission is to provide simple, valuable, and reliable public energy programs to help our communities achieve their local energy and sustainability goals, whatever those may be. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Um, and lastly, transparency. Uh, we are government, so we're subject to public records, sunshine laws, and audited every two years, just like you all. Um, so that we're, uh, I believe that's very important. Uh, I'm not going to labor on this because you guys do have an existing aggregation program, but a little bit about aggregation. Um, what it does is it changes the supply portion of the bill. Um, so you're setting a new default rate for that, uh, supply piece. So instead of folks being on the standard service offer with the local utility, you are bringing more local control, hopefully getting more competitive pricing because of that, and also you can affect what type of power you get. The delivery piece of this stays the same. That part of your bill stays with the local utility. Uh, we don't maintain the wires, we don't do those types of things, so, uh, that reliability piece stays with them. And lastly, the customer is who receives the benefits. Uh, as general counsel, I always bring this up, uh, section 4928.20C of the Ohio Revised Code, uh, is where this is required to have these two public hearings. Now, I warn you, the, these plans are not super exciting stuff, uh, so we try to keep it short and summarize it, but you can go to the full document on our website and also get it here at the city hall. Uh, lastly, uh, to have these hearings, we have to put it in the paper and, you know, do public notice, that's already been done. Uh, so a little bit about the actual plan itself. Um, I mentioned it's, it's not exactly an exciting, uh, document, but I'll try to give you the highlights. Um, so it is already certified by the PUCO, so our certificate and our plan have already been tried and true, tested, so a community doesn't have to come online and reinvent the wheel, it's already there, uh, so they can just join ours. Um, as part of that plan, it has the structure, governance, operations, management, funding, and policies. Um, and so one of the sections of it talks about the description and goals of an opt-out aggregation program. Uh, and one thing to highlight right off the top is participation is voluntary. So an individual will be notified, uh, of their inclusion in the program, but they have the opportunity to decline that service or opt out for no charge. Um, I'll get into a little bit more about that actual, the initial window, but another description of the goals, uh, I already talked about this, buying power, being able to, uh, have a more competitive rate utilizing that, uh, that bulk buying. Um, and we already talked about a couple of these other things, but one thing I want to note on too is customer service. Uh, that is an important part of our program that we are always trying to make better and better. AEP Energy has a call center based here in Columbus, Ohio, that, um, just right up the road, that those folks are there answering the calls. Um, when somebody calls in, they have a dedicated line for Sopac, so they know it's a Sopac caller, so they know exactly what that person is looking for, they're able to look them up and get them, uh, to where they need to be. Sorry, Rex, I didn't know if I told you to go ahead or not. Um, if you could go to the next. Uh, price and program supply. Perfect. Thank you. Um, so this should go without saying, but we always say it off the top, uh, Sopac and AEP Energy have never terminated, canceled, or suspended an energy aggregation program prior to the completion of the engagement or expiration of the term. Um, we, uh, we want you to know that the program's going to be here and it's going to be reliable. Programs typically are fixed-term pricing for one to three years. I say, um, typically because you could lock a rate for somewhere in between, it doesn't have to be 12 months, 24, 36, it could be 18 or whatever. Whatever, uh, month you join your program, you could maybe lock six more months to catch up to, uh, the, the new supply year, if you wanted to, in an 18-month term. Um, however, we are telling folks now, going on the shorter end of that right now for just one year is wise, since the energy markets are very volatile right now. You don't want to get too far out, uh, ahead in a market that is based on a commodity. So trying to stay responsive to that market. Um, we watch the energy markets on a daily basis and receive, uh, daily pricing from AEP Energy, so that allows us to move quickly and buy on dips, uh, for our communities and make sure that we are getting them, uh, as competitive pricing as we possibly can. Um, lastly, we also pay very close attention to the local utility auctions, because those auctions are what sets that standard, uh, service offer for the utility, and that is what we're always trying to make sure that our pricing is below. For opt-out electric aggregation process, so who can participate? This is by statute. Uh, residential and small commercial electricity accounts, small commercial is defined as under 700,000 KWH per year. Um, however, by statute, the opt-out electric aggregation program does exclude the following categories. PIP customers, anyone who has gone out on apples-to-apples and shopped for their own, um, are not included in this program. Large industrial customers, so over that 700,000 KWH per year threshold, and then anyone who chooses to opt out of the program, uh, that's okay, they, they don't have to be in the program. So how does that process work? Eligible residents and small businesses will receive opt-out notice letters in the mail. Um, then there's a 21-day opt-out window. If you don't make it in, in that 21-day, let's say, day 22, you say, "I'm opting out," that's okay, you're still not going to have a fee to leave. The only thing that will happen is you'll be in that program for one meter read cycle. That would be the only harm of that. That's, that's really all that 21-day, uh, window matters. Um, we do not charge early termination fees, I've already kind of mentioned that, but we also don't charge fees for people to come into the program. So if somebody at a later date says, "I opted out, but you know what, that actually seems like a pretty good program, now I've learned about it," they can come back in at any time, they can leave the program, come back in as many times as they want, technically. That is okay. Um, lastly, this is what a sample opt-out notice letter will look like. Um, we, uh, like to have our communities put their own logo on it as well, because then it looks like an official piece of mail, and make sure nobody loses it when it comes to their house and they don't pitch it thinking it's junk mail. We want them to know that it is important and to open it and look at it. Um, lastly, this is what a, uh, opt-out letter typically looks like. Uh, describes the rate, the term, um, a little bit more about it. We have three ways to opt out of the program, so we try to make it easy for folks who don't want to be in it, that's okay. Um, there's a QR code where they can scan it and go to the website, opt out online, they can call the 1-800 number and opt out that way, or they can, uh, fill it in by hand and mail it back, if that's what they choose to do, and that's all, all right. Uh, there's also frequently asked questions on there, and then there's a few more pages that are actual terms and conditions of it. But that is kind of high level, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. And go from there.
When you call, if you call to opt out, is it going to put you on, uh, a line with somebody who's going to try to talk you into staying, or is it just a format of an automatic message?
No, it, it'll be an individual who would answer it, and if the person says, "I'd like to opt out," they'd say, "Okay," and then just take their information and opt them out.
Okay.
So it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Yep, and if somebody doesn't want to talk to someone, that QR code option's there, so.
Sir, I have a question.
Yep.
So you, there's a time period from one to three years, you're suggesting a smaller time period because of the volatility in the market. However, what would be the option if, let's say, the city of London wanted to do a two-year contract, and if the prices are lower next year, that you automatically honor those prices in year two?
Let, let me make sure I follow. So number one, if a community wants to go more than one year, if they say, "Hey, we'd like to lock in for two or three years," that's absolutely their choice, they can do that. So in that rate will be fixed for that time period.
So there's no option that if the, instead of doing a one year and have to do this again in one year, if there was a second year, but Sopac would say, "If the rates are lower a year from now, we will lower those for the city of London for that next year."
Well, now that, because it's not really how it works, and one thing to be clear, you won't have to go through this process again, and opt-out hearings, legislation, you would not have to do that again. We would work very, if you selected one year, we would work very closely with whoever your community said was your representative, and who we were speaking with from the, the community to help make those decisions, and we would work with them to lock either another year or another two years, or whatever it may be. But in terms of locking in a commodity, once that power is purchased, um, that, that is set for that community.
But you said that you guys would go on the market and buy it at a lower rate in the dips.
For when communities join Sopac, but also for that next year. So for example, we have, we have communities that have already locked currently, um, and they're already looking at next years, so that they can lock in at a good rate, or have a hedging strategy, strategy where you can buy certain blocks of power, so that you're staying responsive to where that market's at. So you could buy like 25% of the load for next year, kind of thing.
The city could.
Correct. But it would be part of that price for the next year? If that makes sense?
Not really.
Okay.
Not, not if you're buying on the dip, that you're, we don't get the opportunity to, uh, join in on that, that's.
Well, no, it, it could be, is what I'm saying. So if, let's say London locked for 12 months, and you were looking at the next supply year, that, that's what I'm referencing, so it could be power for that next supply year. Does that make sense?
Well, no, I understand what you're saying, it just seems like it's a one-way street there.
But we, we definitely make sure that we're communicating closely with our community on what they want us to do.
It's totally up to the municipality.
Yes.
What they lock into. Whenever I first took my position, I worked with a aggregate, and they came to with me and got a really good rate. I was, I gambled for the city. I said, "You know, I think that's really good," because they were only wanting to do two to three years, I said, "Can we do four?" They go, "Yeah, if you want to do four, it is a good rate, yeah, we can do that." We got lucky, we got a really, really good low rate for four years. The price went up, they had to stick by their guns and give us the low price. On the other way, if I'd have messed up and the rate would have went down, they're not going to go down, they're going to keep it at the rate that I locked it in for. It, that's why it's called a lock-in rate, is you're locked in. So, you know, we were just very fortunate when we did it last time, that we got in at probably the best time you could ever get into, and got a really good rate. And, you know, everything else that he quoted and said is exactly the same as what we did four years ago. Um, they sent out the opt-out notifications to all the citizens, I had numerous people calling, and they were livid, "You're not going to tell me who I'm going to use for my electricity." And I said, "Well, that's fine, you, you can opt out, that's your choice, you, you'll go to whoever you want to." And they opted out. And guess what, a few years later, they called me back and they go, "Well, you know what, that really wasn't that bad a deal, can I get back in?" Sure. We let them back in. So it's exactly what he said, it's what we've been enjoying for the past four years. Now, from what I'm seeing, we're not going to be, and that's why he's opting to say only a year, the rates aren't that pretty right now. So that's why he's saying, you know, "We want to lock in, maybe just for a year, and hope that they go down next year, because you're locked in, and we can't get you down. If you do two years, you're going to have to stay at higher rate." So.
But the opposite's also true, that if it's, I, I don't know what your number is, you haven't said that yet, but, uh, we'll, we'll say it's, you know, eight. Instead of 4.6 is what we had, let's say it goes to eight, because we know it's going to go up. But we do it for one year, and then next year, if it's 11, we're going to have to get it at 11, because that's the going rate then, while eight would have been better.
Yeah, and one thing to keep in mind is, these folks are, we're talking about residents and small businesses that have chosen to stay on the standard service offer. If they've already gone out and shopped for power, they're not included in this. So if, if the markets go up next year, for example, and that local utility standard service offer goes up, what we're trying to do is provide some relief for folks, just lower than that rate is what we're targeting, always. If folks want to go out and shop on their own, that is absolutely not discouraged. Um, we, we are not here to tell people not to do that.
I know we have a gentleman or a couple in the audience that would like to speak.
Yeah, I have a question, and I know what Greg's getting. If the city decides to go with whomever, the residents of the city can opt in and out as many times as they want, but the city can't. I don't see what's the difference between an individual opting in and out whenever he wants to versus the city.
Yeah, I mean, uh, just by statute and by PUCO regulations, we're, we're not allowed to just move communities completely in and out. That, that would cause, um, a lot of confusion for residents, not knowing what, there's no certainty then, if we were doing that. So it really, it makes it so, um, and we try to make it as easy as possible. If somebody wants to leave the program, we have those three ways to do it, um, and we try to make it easy, and there's no fees, um, so.
Well, I'm aware of all that, because I've been, I've done this before, and I guess I'm with Greg as far as, yeah, you're locked into a minimum of one year, but say after six months, you see that the rates are going to go down for the next year, but since we, but since the city locked in for two, we can't take advantage of that, or you won't let the city take advantage of that?
Yeah, and that, well, so number one, one thing we try to do is stay close to that Jan, June supply year. Supply years go from June to June, so if you stay close to that, you're able to stay responsive to what that rate is, so that you don't get out of whack for six months, for example, and we're able to keep it a competitive rate by paying close attention to that. Uh, number two, to your question about if you went two years, that's why we're encouraging folks to stay on the shorter end now, because there is such volatility.
I agree with you there, but the demand for electricity is never going to go down, and the supply and demand is going to be even greater going into the future. So I don't understand why you would even say, "Well, the volatility," yes, I understand that now, but the rates are never going to come back down to where they used to be, because the supply and demand is, is so great.
Yeah, I, I wish I had a, I wish I could stand here and tell you exactly what the rates are going to be in a year or two, or three. I can't promise, you know what I mean, I, I can't tell you what it's going to do. Um, you know, it, it does, to your point, supply and demand of how much electricity there is, there's also other elements in there, such as capacity costs, those are set by PJM or the operator. Those are set by PJM or the operator of our grid. So those things do fluctuate per year or two. So that moves some of the pricing we're looking at too. So I hear you. I, I know we're, we're trying to do the best we can in the commodities market. Nobody can predict what commodities are going to do. If I could, I probably wouldn't be standing here. But, you know.
So based over the last three or four years?
Mm-hmm.
The rates have not gone down in the last three to four years? They've either stayed the same or they have went up?
Yeah. It, well, close, there, there's been fluctuation. There has been some higher rates back two years ago. Then there was a bit of a dip and we saw communities in the six cent range. Now you're seeing most communities up in the nine cent range, which is where the local utility standard service offer is. So it definitely has fluctuated. It hasn't gone down as far, as far as four cents. To Rex's point, you guys locked in at a great time when he did that, you know, back three, four years ago. But, yeah, I mean, will they be in the eight cent range in the future? Maybe. Will it be in the 10 cent range? Could be. I, I don't know. But, you know, when you're talking about a cent or two fluctuation, that's, we're trying to stay close to where that standard service offer is, that market. And help reduce the pain for folks that have rates going higher. So that's our goal.
When you opt in, you get automatically put in 100% renewable plan, right?
Yes, but you can opt down to a.
50% or non-renewable?
Non-renewable option. Yep.
You have the 50% optional.
We don't have a 50% option.
100% or none?
Correct. We do, I, I'll clarify. City of Cleveland has a 50% option. They requested that. So it is, yeah.
Is that information, the comparison charts on the costs available and ready? Or is that something we have to hunt down?
No. I mean, it's something we can provide for sure. It's, it is a very minimal part of the bill. I, off the top of my head, recs recently have been like $2.50. So you're talking about, if you move the decimal plate, you're, you're talking a very, very tiny part of the bill, maybe $2 per month, like two, two real dollars. I'm not talking about the rates. So it's a very small part of the bill.
Is it possible that you could not automatically opt in at 100% renewable? Or that's something that we choose instead?
As a community, you mean?
Yeah. Automatically, you put 100%.
I, I don't know. We don't have any communities that do that, to be honest with you. It's such a small part of the bill that most communities want to go ahead and do that and make the step-down option there. City of Cleveland, for example, out of 50,000 customers, we only had 10 customers opt to the brown, the opt-down rate, traditional power. So it, it really, because it's such a small part of the bill, most folks just said, that's okay.
If the federal government eliminates renewable subsidies, how's that going to affect?
I, I don't know what you mean by subsidies, but I will say it won't affect the rate that we lock. Whatever happens there will not, would not affect our rate.
And do you know what the administrative piece for a city area would be?
Uh, yes. As, our rate is always $2 per megawatt hour, $2 per megawatt hour. I can't talk. That is about $1.90 per household per month. And we don't just provide the aggregation. I think we talked about before, the additional services, grant writing, you know, community grants are potential part of the program, different things like that that could, the community could take advantage of.
Right. But you do use those fees to fund solar farms and things like that outside, like everywhere, not, wouldn't just be for our community, right?
Um, not currently. We don't. You know, in, in the future, will we maybe have power purchase agreements for, to get power from solar farms? Possibly. Yeah.
So I'm saying, if we didn't want to use our fees to fund other people's projects, would that be possible? Would that be on our fees going to that?
I, I don't know as I stand here, but I will tell you that if, in a theoretical structure like that, then if the community wanted to be separated off, they wouldn't also get the benefits of that too, of the better stable rates from knowing where our power's from.
Can you give us a detailed explanation of renewable energy credits and how they work?
Yeah, absolutely. So renewable energy credits are, one megawatt is, I'm sorry, one megawatt produced of power is one rec. I like to use the analogy of an ATM. You go to an ATM, you take money out. It didn't physically, those dollars you have in your hand did not physically come from that bank account that you have. But once that money's in your hand, it's yours. Similar concept. Once that one megawatt of power is created, wherever it's created, it is earmarked for you, once you've gotten that rec, and it's your power. So it is a, a market, just like we create for a number of things, to be able to say that that is my power. Once any electricity is put into the wires, no matter the source, it's all jumbled up, the electrons are, so you have absolutely no idea where that electric came from. So it is a method to be able to track things. We use green E-Recs, which are the gold standard. So they have a very good tracking system, so we're able to tell exactly where the power came from. And most, I would say, a lot of, almost all of our communities, the current recs come from either Texas or Oklahoma when, currently.
And how do you guys communicate rate changes?
Uh, we, we do mailers to folks. It's also always on our website. When there's a rate change, we update it there. But each community, we also work with them on if they have more specific communications plans as well. We also work with them on putting it on their social media, their website, that sort of thing.
I think that's all I have for you. I have a question.
Sure.
If I'm allowed.
Yep.
Are other options being considered or is this the only option we have on the table?
As far as I know, this is the only option we have on the table. The recs might, I mean, administration might.
We like the other options that SOPEC has to offer as far as helping with grant writing, the different other things that he addressed earlier. He did come and talk to our committee. It was, it was basically stated that there are only two organizations that offer this type of services in the state of Ohio. It's SOPEC and.
NOPEC.
NOPEC. And it was also stated that NOPEC, they like to do variable rate pricing and the committee didn't really feel, feel comfortable with that. So that's why it's with this one. I literally have probably four or five other just companies that'll do the aggregation thing for us that's available, absolutely in the aggregation side, and that's all they do. Totally exactly the same type of plan that we're looking at right now. So I look, I personally felt and the committee felt that it was best to bring forward somebody that offered us more than that. SOPEC also, I do believe, offers the possibility of doing a natural gas aggregation also. That would take the community to vote on being able to put something like that together on a ballot first. So I like the aspect of being able to work with one entity as opposed to having all these other entities trying to knock down your door, trying to get your business. The last one we used, they got disbanded. I, I enjoyed it working with them. Don't, don't know exactly what happened, but the PU, PUCO forced them to dismantle. So I'm assuming something wasn't very good, what they did. So rather than go with a, a company that's constantly calling on you, I'd rather go with somebody that's, that's stable, that's worked with a lot of communities and does a lot of other things. That's just me and that was the committee's choice also, wasn't just me. I basically brought them to the committee. The committee voted to bring it to council.
So the community doesn't really have options to choose from?
Sure you do. You can go, you can use apples to apples any daytime you want.
Yeah, you can opt out.
You can do it. That's what he said. I mean, if you're, if you're a marketing guy and you can play the stock market, play the electric market too. That's what I, that's what I do. And I had numerous people, when we negotiated at the four, four point some cents per kilowatt hour before, they basically said, you're not going to tell me who to use. I'm like, okay, that's your right. Just sign the opt-out letter and you're out and you can choose whatever you want. And they did. And several of them come back and go, you know what? You guys did a pretty good job. I'd like to come back. And I'm like, that's fine. You can come back. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a twist your arm. You have to take it. You don't have to take what we say. You can do whatever you want. Not, not that way on everything in life, but in this case, you can do whatever you want.
I've got one last question.
Yeah.
You say that all your energy comes from AEP.
AEP Energy.
Okay.
And it does, well, just to clarify, they are a CREST provider, which is a competitive retail electric service provider. We have to have one. They actually go out on the market and purchase it on the open market for us. So it's not like it's coming directly from them. They go out on the market.
So with that being said, if there's a power shortage here in London, who services that? Does AEP?
No. It's your, still your local utility. So Ohio Edison. Yep. We do not impact that.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I will say that, that is one thing that I really have trouble getting my mind about, around is you're paying this company for your electric, but yet it's all channeled through and coming through with, with Ohio Edison. So that, that's kind of hard to grasp. So it's like everybody's pouring, pouring fuel in the pot and then it, and then we start siphoning it out of that big pot, I guess.
It's, it's very similar to, I'll give you an analogy. You're, you're paying somebody for water to fill your pool. Getting that done ahead of time. You're paying somebody for that water, but you're paying somebody else to carry it. And that, that company can give you a good rate or help you on the bill, is charging it at one time, but you really have two different sources that you're working with. They're, they're not, they're not associated.
And it's kind of.
You've got generation, you've got transmission, and you have the two of those mix. You just happen to be on the same bill.
And to take your analogy further, those water droplets, I don't know where they came from originally. It's same as electrons.
Right.
It's exact same. So.
Question, is there any plans to put this presentation or a frequently asked questions, including what was asked tonight, to get it on our website? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, can I give a motion to exit public hearing and enter back into a regular council meeting?
Make a motion to exit the public hearing, enter back into regular council meeting.
Second.
Communications and announcements, one thing I got, next Thursday, July 3rd, that council meeting is canceled due for 4th of July celebration, as well as London fireworks that evening. Audience concerns. First up, we have Cooper Hudson Love. If you could please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Cooper Hudson Love, 381 Lanus Lane.
All right. Frequently asked question that we should all think of as city officials and of community members. What is London? What is London? What do you think of?
What do you think of when you say, what is London? What do you think of our community? Is it good for business? Is it a more high-end community? Is it a low-end community? Is it a mix? What is London? So recently, we've approved the nine, about 900 homes priced at $450,000 to $650,000. And now on the agenda, we have 289 homes priced between $400,000 and $500,000, but it's exclusive to seniors, 55-plus. I think it's a little out of step with our local economy. I don't really think that it's suitable for what we want London to be. And another question would be like, what entices seniors who have this type of retirement money to afford these houses to come to London out of all places? What, what brings them here? Out of, you know, if they could take that $400,000, $500,000 for that house and go somewhere like, let's say, Florida, you know, have a smaller house there or have, you know, just on the coastline, more beach, more mountain in Tennessee area. What brings them here out of all places? And I think there's a price mismatch for our community. So I looked up the average pay for London, people in London, citizens, and it was between $35,000 and $75,000. And I have my sources as well, if you'd like to see that. And I just don't think this being the senior thing would work out to be exclusive just for them. I do like the idea of expanding and having more housing and more options, but I don't think the senior only would be the most effective option because they're just, they're isolated out of, you know, number one concern, they're isolated. And I think that there's a lot more potential if we bring more working-class families to, to London for the future. Because in 10, 20, 30 years, what are we going to look like? It strains community, certain, you know, emergency services. It can strain that water, sewer, because it, it's sprawled. So we're sprawling out and it's not really any condensed middle housing like duplexes, townhomes, those such things, in the price range of between $275,000 to $425,000. I really think we should try to think about what this is really going to, how it's going to impact our community in, like I said, those 10, 20, 30 years. So, yeah. I think we should shift our housing focus towards more affordable, workforce-oriented homes and try to get rid of that senior-only community. I actually called Sovereign Village and wondered what their occupancy rate was, and they said about 60% and they're still building. So I'd like to see how that ends up turning out in that project. And I think that's good as that number one, senior-only living community. I don't really think we need to add another one to 42 corridor off of 42 and Betty Wilson. So our solution to this, my suggestion here, I think that we should implement those middle housing zones to find that affordable housing like townhomes and duplexes. And I mentioned that price range earlier. I don't think we should, I think we should reassess the idea of adding that senior living community and really reassess the numbers and what you're really going to collect in taxes because they, how, they're on fixed, and most of them are on fixed incomes and they don't really have too much income tax to pay. So mainly, I think that we need to try to link that housing approvals to the local job creation and the public service capacity instead of straining our resources out to extended communities. I think that's all I got for now.
Josh, you mind if I touch on a couple things?
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Completely agree with you on a couple things. One thing is, we do need many different types of housing. And, you know, we did approve more apartments, townhomes for sale, condos for sale. And, you know, we're still working on that project and hopefully that comes to fruition. I actually have another project that I'm going to talk about in my mayor update, and I think you'll be very happy to hear, to hear the next project we're working on.
Good, good, good.
As for the senior living, Kenny Boulevard, those condos back there. If anybody knows anything about those condos, they are on the market for about two hours before they sell, right? They are, people really, really want those things. And, you know, so there's a demand for that, right? And that's kind of what would fill that, that would fill. Also, you know, if we start turning down, you know, different kinds of projects, a lot of those projects, what they can do is they can move right outside the city limits, right? So then we get no tax dollars for any of that. But what do we do if shared services, our fire and our police will have to be the first ones and we're not going to be able to use those tax dollars? Because as we grow, what we will do is our tax dollars will grow. And then as population grows, so does our safety services, right? We're going to need more police officers, more cars, more fire engines, more firefighters, EMS. So as that grows, we grow with it. And, and that's how you try to keep that pace. And you talked about like sprawling out and, and being a strain on safety services, right? And I am, you know, like I talked about, we are looking at the apartments and hopefully there's some new apartments and those townhomes. But apartments can be a strain too, right? And I know condos can be a strain where they're all five-unit condos in one building because instead of having two houses on that lot, you have pretty much five houses, right? So five families. So five families. So five, five times, somebody needs an ambulance, five times somebody needs a police officer. So those definitely put strains on there too. But I completely agree that we need to continue to look at all different avenues of different kind of housing because, and I will talk about that, and I think you're going to be excited about the next project that we're looking at. But I just kind of wanted to, you know, you know, I, I'd hate to, for council to say, yeah, you know, let's not do any senior living here and then that project move one mile down 42 into the county and we don't get any of the tax dollars, but they'll be using our roads every day, coming into our stores, you know what I'm saying? So it'll be a burden on us also.
Yeah. So I do think if, when approving these, I think to this public itself, I think we need to try to, because really what we're making is business deals. It's really, you know, it's as the city, we're making business deals and trying to get that best return on investment for taxes and, you know, how's it, what are we averaging out for what our city service is going to cost us? And then what are we going to bring in from tax revenue to try to counteract that? And I think we do need to try to write that up and make that public aware and find those average or what we're going to, what we're hoping to see, the amounts and what we're really bringing and show what's the breakdown? You know, what's the breakdown of what our average city service cost is going to be on us? And then what are we going to bring in in taxes from those families that are, are in the retirement community that's going to be there? I just think as public itself, as the public and the citizens of the community, I think we just need to have a little bit more information out, public to us, and a little bit more information on why this is going to be beneficial for us and when looking 10 or 20, 30 years down the line, how, how is this going to be beneficial toward the community itself? And how's it going to help the economic development?
Yeah, and, and those numbers usually do come out during the, during the public hearings. The developer, I know when we were going through London Landing, right? They came and said, this is going to give this, this much, they're averaging, whatever it was at that point, averaging $305,000. So it's going to bring this much money in tax dollars because if you can buy a $300,000 home, we'll just use that for example, you have to make X amount of dollars, right, as, as a, as a household. And the developers usually during public hearings give all that information of, you know, and, and I don't remember the number of something like in 10 years, you'll make $20 million in taxes or whatever.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm not saying that was the number, but the public hearing, I think you'll hear a lot more of that stuff on July 17th.
Okay.
So yeah, they usually get that information out on every development that we do.
Okay. I do think once we get that information, like we even said about the SOPEC thing, I think that needs to also go out and on the website itself and try to promote that on Facebook as well. Try to get a little bit more gain because I mean, this is a big pro, you know, this is all big projects and it's going to affect all of us really. Just need a little, yeah, I think we need to post that out. Once we get those numbers and everything and try to make us all more aware of it. So.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, man.
Yep.
Great job, dude. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Raymond Anthony. State your name and address for the record, please.
Raymond Anthony, 521 Eaton. As I was going down through the agenda tonight, I noticed a couple of things that kind of sparked interest. And two of those that I wanted to talk about, I've already been talked about, which was ordinance 150-25 and ordinance 155, or 151-25. How under, under new business, resolution 153-25, the city council has recommended speed bumps and speed signs to alleviate speeding within the city. I don't know if this has come about recently since there's a group of people here that were from Jacob Lane in that area telling city council about the speed problem on that particular street. But from my point of view and driving around the city of London, they're speeding everywhere. And even on your major thoroughfares like Lafayette Street, East High Street, Kenny, and any other place. So my, so, and you don't have to answer this now. You can answer these questions when we come to these resolutions. But I'd like to know how you're going to, is there a plan in place to where a city council approves speed bumps? How much of the city is going to be covered in speed bumps? Or just when a, what if a people on a certain street come to city council and said, you know what? We've got speeders here all the time. What's it going to take for them to eventually get speed bumps? So that's my main concern right there. Because like I said, you, I've driven up Lafayette, Kenny, East High, and some of the other major thoroughfares and there's speeders all the time. Now, what do you mean by speeder? Does it mean one or two miles over the speed limit? Five, 10? Well, I don't have a radar gun, so I can't tell you, but I know they're going faster than, than I am. And I try to obey the, the speed limit in, in that area. So under resolution 154-25, the city would like to purchase stealth monitors to monitor traffic patterns and speed throughout the city. Well, these two words, stealth monitors, I had a hard time digesting what that meant. So I Googled it. And what I found, this has to do with computers and software. So when this comes up to be talked about, can someone please tell me what those two words actually mean when it comes to helping lower the speed throughout the city? And the last ordinance that I have a concern about is ordinance 155-25. An ordinance adjusting the rate of curb assistance. I don't know what that means. I think I know what it means. I think it means the people who, on your trash. You can get a little sticker that says curb assistance, which means when the sanitation department comes around and picks up your trash, if they see this little sticker, that means that they have to dump the trash and, and take it back up to their, in front of their garage. That's what I think this means. If I'm wrong, please tell me, you know, what it really means as far as curb assistance. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the, a couple of the things we talked about in the service committee meeting was needing some type of criteria for where to put speed bumps or speed feedback signs, that type of thing. Because we don't want to be preferential to certain areas and there's speeding issues multiple places. So that's one of the things that we would likely be talking about in the next service committee meeting, is some type of criteria. That's it.
Onto committee reports. Yeah, just state your name and address for records.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jim Boyd, 364 Ashford Avenue. And one of the things that I wanted to call to attention, it's not dire emergency, but something I think that we need to look at and put on the agenda to pay attention to here within the municipal building itself, now that we have this building. And, and I come from a background where I had to do this quite a bit in the businesses that I was in at the various warehouses in Columbus, is we need to look at the potential for security, in my opinion. So not only protecting the people that are in the building as the workers themselves, but any of the public that might come through. So you have kind of an open building. You have a building that's open for anybody to come through. For example, right now, you know, we're here for a council meeting, someone that's disgruntled. It, it could be, could, could end up in something that's bad, that we're not prepared for. And I think that in the long run, I think it's better to be prepared ahead of time before, rather than to come after the fact and go, boy, we really should have had something like that there. So I just call that attention. I think it's something that should be investigated, something that we should look at and determine how, how could we do that cost-effectively and what does it entail? But being able to provide that both to the community that comes to the building and to those workers that are here at the building through the days as well. So it's just a thought I had.
All right, thank you. Onto committee reports. Greg?
Personnel, Budget, and Finance Committee met on June 16th. The auditors here, would you like to give a report tonight? Uh huh, I got it. We'll give you just a little bit of information here. The, the books for May were closed. Revenue for the month was $1,067,000. I'm going to round up to 380, or $384,000. Expenses were $1,306,476. Overall, for the year, the revenue, and I'm going to take out the bond money because this is a truer number. Our number for revenue for the year is $8,704,919. And our expenses are $8,401,834. So we are roughly $300,000 to the good. I don't know that I remember to grab the tax report. I did. For the month, the tax receipts for the month over last year were up 14%, but actually for the year, we're down just a little bit. Point 13% for the year. It's only a $3,200 difference for the year overall out of $2,494,000. So we're down just a little bit. The fire department has its own budget and their own fund. So for the year, they're actually up 1.67%. They've gotten $1,233,176 for the year, which is up over the $1,200 and roughly $13,000 from last year. So things are pretty flat overall. Some of the, most, some of the items we're going to discuss tonight, they'll come up here later, the speed bumps, the traffic calming, the, the sanitation curb assistance, that's going to come up. One thing that's not going to come up, that was brought up, is the discussion of a possibly a public works director in the future. Not, not immediately, but we're, they're looking into that a little bit so that we can see if that's a way we want to go forward later. The next meeting will be July 14th, 5:30 in the room next door.
All right, thank you. Brent?
On June 10th, I attended a public service and public safety meeting. I have the public recs report here. The pool opened May 29th after a lot of repairs. There's swimmin' lessons. The Madison County Marlins were once again using their racing pool for practice sessions and their two home meets. And there's water aerobics on Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 7:00. And I have the fire chief's report here. He did departmental EMS training through Ohio Health, departmental EMS, week activities through Madison Health, departmental fire training, ladder training, street familiarization. Hosted several students for ride time for tolls and grant paramedic class. Participated in several graduation events, participated in Safety Town, participated in memorial service for fallen deputy, completed annual hose testing, participated in radiological training, participated in tolls job there.
Thank you. Rich?
On June 10th, we had safety committee meeting. We got a little bit of a late start because public service meeting went late. We started at 6:16. All my committee members were present. We approved the 5:13 minutes. Fire chief's report was accepted. Mr. McDaniel just gave that. Police chief's report was accepted. Mr. Stahl will give that momentarily. We talked about speed bumps and portable signs that we had talked about previously. We had voted previously, 3-0 vote to send that to finance, which happened. We had a pedestrian bridge that, correct me if I'm wrong, SOPEC was working on? No? Choice one, okay. I'm sorry. I've got two notes here and I wasn't real sure. Okay, they were trying to get a pedestrian bridge out by the high school over to the middle school. The bed was turned down. The grant, grant was turned down. Okay. And that was basically all we had. We adjourned at 6:36 as a short meeting. Next meeting going to be July the 8th at 6:00 PM, hopefully at 6:00 PM in the conference room next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
I attended the finance committee meeting. Mr. Eads already went through all that. And also attended the public service committee meeting. They talked about the traffic calming options, like the speed feedback signs and speed bumps. And then also talked about needing a criteria to prevent looking bias to certain areas of town. And then Mr. McDaniel brought up an option of possibly having green roofs on certain buildings in town. We did have a presentation on the possibility of a rec center. And that was reviewed by a company that came in and went over that with us. Mr. Long talked about, and Ms. Jackman will give that report, but he also talked about the possibility of getting a small grant to pave Oak Street, the area between Maine, or the area between Maine and Oak Street along the courthouse where the brick road is. We also talked about, or Landon talked about the pickleball that it's, needs to get a bid package together. So that's still in process. And that the mill and fill will happen in August for the basketball courts out on Park Avenue. They also talked about needing a manifold, splash pad manifold for the splash pad at the pool. That's it. The next meeting is July 8th at 5:00 at the meeting room next door.
All right, thank you. John?
This is from the London Police Division. Public Safety Committee briefing, June 10, 2025. Initial interviews for applicants to the police officer position were held that week. Groundbreaking was held on May 27th for the new police facility. Central dispatcher will be operational on July 1. Our current dispatcher's positions will be terminated on July 12. The hiring process for the administrative support specialist positions will be initiated at next week's Civil Service Commission meeting. LPD participated in Walmart Safety Day, LES Safety Town program, and various London City School events at the end of the year. We also presented at the MC Senior Center on Scams and Safety Initiatives. Attended Clark State Criminal Justice Advisory Committee meeting. Officer Derek Haddock was selected as a school resource manager for the 25, 26 school year. The semi-annual office shift bid was completed and takes effect June 29th. Stats through May 31. Calls for service 3,190. Incidents 745. Traffic citations 330. Traffic stops 1,147. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Lisa?
Yes, I have the street department's report summary from the public service committee. The street department has been very busy across town. They worked on the water line at the dog park, a door at Cowling Park, some potholes in an alley. They reported poles that were damaged to Ohio Edison as well as some lights that were out. They filled a hole that had been brought up to them that was in Cowling Park. So they took care of that. He did mention, he's looking into starting a right-of-way program for the utility companies. Interviewed a new applicant, worked on equipment, got Center Street, the paving is finished there and it's been striped. And it's wonderful after it was closed for so long. And he did mention working on the grant for the West Fourth Street up by the courthouse. mention working on the grant for the West Fourth Street up by the courthouse.
Okay, thank you. Onto city official reports.
Wants me to go first. Just wanted to let council know, I think most of you already have heard it through the grapevine, small-town things travels fast, but after about a year of deliberation between my wife and taking care of my mother, I've decided to step down as safety service director and move in south and taking my mom with us and so I can care for her more easily. It's been a pleasure working with the mayor, the city council, and working with the citizens of London. I've enjoyed it. I enjoyed it when I was on council. I enjoyed it as safety service director. And I'll check in on you every once in a while and see what's going on. Thank you.
Did not know that.
Well, you're not in the know.
Apparently not.
People that I see on the streets are like, "Well, here you're going." I'm like, "How did you know that?"
When, when was your last name?
Mid-August.
Is that a tier, Rex? Is that a tier?
A tier, yeah. Actually sweat because I'm going south.
Well, good evening. I wanted him to go first because I do want to start off by thanking Mr. Castle for his service to the city of London. Now that he's moving out of state, I wish him nothing but the best on his new journey. He has been a huge asset, not only to myself and the administration, but to the city of London as a whole. When he came in as safety service director, he really hit the ground running and hasn't stopped. As you guys know, everything that's been going on the past few years. We've been able to accomplish a lot, especially with the help from you guys. But there's just, I just can't thank him enough for what he's done. So his attention to detail and financial background has benefited the city in so many ways. So he's definitely going to be missed, and I appreciate you, Rex, and thank you for everything. But that now means I'll need to fill the safety service director position. So I've come up with a short list of great candidates, and I'm starting the process with that. I will be talking to some council committees about transition and hope that we can overlap, like we talked about before, where we change the strength ordinance, where I can bring in a new safety service director for about two weeks. So they can come and train from Rex, and Rex can be here and, you know, for that couple of weeks in August or maybe late July. So I'll be bringing that, and hopefully we can bring that to the 17th and, fingers crossed, get that suspended and passed and be able to bring in the new safety service director to work under Rex for a couple of weeks to help with that transition period. So I just want to kind of bring that up to you and get your thoughts on that. Like I said, it will just really help the transition so we can continue to keep doing the great work we're doing and hit the ground running. He can hit the ground running, or she can hit the ground running. If you guys haven't noticed, there are two new drop boxes at City Hall. The auditor's office had a great idea of bringing in a drop box for old flags so they can be disposed of properly. That box is located out front of City Hall on South Walnut Street, and it has received a lot of flags so far. And we just did a little bit of stuff on Facebook, but people are seeing it. So if you have an old flag and you want to dispose of it properly, you can come to City Hall and put it in the drop box. It looks like a little old-school mailbox out there. And the London Lions Club has put their eyeglass box inside the main entrance here, and you can dispose of your eyeglasses, correct? And they will be refurbished so other people can use them?
Yes, sir.
Is that how that goes?
Yes, sir.
Yep, I thought so. So that's right inside the door at City Hall. So if you have some old eyeglasses laying around, just swing on up and toss some eyeglasses in there, and I bet somebody would greatly appreciate that. Since the last meeting, there's been a lot of great events. Summertime is busy, but a lot of great stuff going on around town. The Lions had their kicking off the summer bash, and Walmart had their safety event. London Strawberry Festival was held. The Cobras made their way into town. Each event was fantastic and all very well-attended. So it's great to be able to bring those things to London, and I just wanted to bring that up again because I want to thank all the organizers for their time and putting the events on and for their dedication to the community and doing these things on a volunteer basis. So thank you for that. Speaking of events, tomorrow we'll be hosting the summer movie in the park series for the city of London. It's going to begin at 5:00 PM. And then the Dogman movie will be showed at dusk. So that's down at Cowling Park. It's a community event. We'll have food trucks, multiple bounce houses, face painting, magic show, and much, much more. So pop on down to Cowling Park tomorrow. Have the kids come out. It's going to be a good time. The London fireworks will be held on Thursday, July 3rd at London High School with the show starting right around 10:00 PM. Very excited about this year's show. With your guys' generosity, we were able to increase the number of fireworks that are going to be let off. The show will still be around 20-ish minutes. Just because we paid a little bit more doesn't mean that it goes longer because they talk about people lose interest after a while. It's just going to be more bang and more boom during that 20 minutes. So it should be a great time. Next Saturday, Massa County Fair is going to start, running July 5th through the 12th. Kids are putting a lot of work into the project. I've been hearing a bunch of great stories. So them all getting their projects together and getting ready for H and all that. Great events going on every evening out there. So, you know, nice fun events. And then, I talked about it, so demolition derby. My car's almost complete, just needs a bumper. So if you want to come cheer for me or against me, I'll be doing that on Saturday, July 12. OHM Advisors has supplied the administration with the comprehensive plan for review. We'll be going through that 216-page document in the coming days. After the review process, OHM will provide us with the public draft, and we'll be able to start sharing that and getting that out online. It's been a long process, but it's been worth it. So I do want to thank everybody for their input. We're very excited to have that completed. The administration is also going over the SAFE, Safe Access for Everyone Sidewalk Guideline proposal supplied by Councilman Eads. I want to thank everyone that worked on that project and got that draft to us and seeing the importance of having that plan in place. So we do look forward to the brainstorming session that we're going to have to give our input. And so we were talking about developments. So I know we've been very successful in bringing housing, but some can't afford those price points. We're currently working with a developer to bring in 265 houses. That'll be $220,000. And I know to some that may still seem high, but with London landing homes currently averaging about 370,000, this is a lower price point, but still a quality product. With rental rates rising, people will be able to purchase a home for about the same amount that they're paying for a larger apartment within the city. So we continue to work with the developer, and, you know, we're hoping to see that project come through Planning Commission as well as City Council. You know, Cooper, you're exactly right, and I hear it from other people, is, you know, my kid's getting out of college, he can't afford a $400,000 house. I'll tell you what, I don't think I could afford a $400,000 house right now if I wouldn't have got in when I got in. But, you know, so having these $220,000 homes will bring younger people in, will bring young professionals in, people starting off, families who, you know, are working here and have their kids here in the schools and give them a chance to own a home instead of renting an apartment. So we're very excited about this project. 265 homes. And, you know, like I said, people hear $220,000 as a starter home, but, I mean, it's the economy and that is what it is. But when you really break it down and look at it, what a 30-year mortgage rate would be with nothing down, it's about what apartments are going for right now, larger apartments. So very excited for that. As our report at the last meeting, we continue to monitor and go through the governmental process of people not mowing their properties. Please just mow your grass. Please just mow your grass. That's all I can say. It's such a pain every summer, but just mow your grass. Brings me to the Molo Fun Fact, which is the number 70. On the 4th of July, we will host our Independence Day Parade, which is starting at 11:00 AM. This will be the largest parade to date with about 70 entries in it. It's big. So the parade route will be from Park Avenue and head south on Main Street to First Street. So I'm excited for the parade and helping bring this celebration to the citizens. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
May I ask a few questions? This is more of a, I guess this isn't a question, but a few years ago, we joined the land bank. And then, you know, more recently than that, we transferred all of our services to Mid-Ohio. Neither one of those entities has been here to give us a report. In the future, I'd like to get a report from each one of those. I'm just curious about how those things are working. Another item that was brought up is two houses been on fire at some point in the last year. Both houses are vacant. Those look like they need demolished. Do we have any idea what the progress will be on those? I think the one over on Lincoln, I don't know that it's even boarded up properly. It's just a danger the way that it sits. And then also, Mayor, you made me think of an item that I, we all received an email, I'm sure you did, to America 250. 250th birthday of America is going to be next year. They're trying to do celebrations across the state. I don't see anything, anybody from London that's included in that. I know the Lions Club as an organization would like to help out, and will probably do something with our bash event, but we might want to help out in other ways. But I just think maybe next year at the fireworks, you know, it used to be years ago, there was a whole event out there at the school with the fireworks. And maybe next year, that needs to happen again as part of the America 250 celebration. Just bringing that up to you as a thought. Thank you.
Kennedy, you have it? Okay, onto old business. Up for our fourth reading. Ordinance 140-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 140-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement.
So this involves the properties at 36 to 42 West First Street. It involves an abatement of property taxes of 100% in 15 years on just improvements to those properties, not the base rate that currently is in place. That would continue to be paid? That's it. Any questions on that?
The school, we got the email, the school's approved their part of that. As a couple of days ago, at school board meeting.
Yeah, Tuesday.
And that's what I believe we were waiting on at the last meeting, was school board approval.
So I'll make a motion to adopt. Adopt?
I'll second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 140-25 has passed. Onto the third reading, Resolution 141-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 141-25 sponsored by Greg Eads. A resolution revising job descriptions.
These are the job descriptions of the police department. On our first reading, we had not had a chance to actually look and see what the changes were since then. They have been back to, we've discussed these at the finance committee. There were no objections to these job descriptions and their changes. This is the third reading, a move that we adopt.
I'll second.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Resolution 141-25 has passed. Onto the second reading, Resolution 142-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 142-25 sponsored by Shannon Trainer. The resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds. The police department is purchasing a used unmarked vehicle.
Correct. And since she's not here, funds, we received funds when they sold cruisers that were no longer in service, equalling $12,005. The police department's asked this $12,000 to be put back into their budget so that they can buy an unused or a used unmarked vehicle.
Any questions on this? Onto Resolution 143-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Resolution 143-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt. Resolution increasing appropriations. City needs to install new streetlights on High Street.
So this is appropriation of $25,000 for streetlights. I believe Kenny in East High. Is that an LED light?
And also High and Andrew Court, east or west, whichever one it is.
Yeah.
So they have a light, at least at east, right? And this is just going to add, is that the process, we're just going to add more lighting to the poles that are existing? But does Kenny have that light there already at Kenny, or is that an added? No light on High Street? Okay.
Any questions on this one? Onto ordinance 146-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 146-25 sponsored by John Stahl. An ordinance amending section 1268 of the codified ordinances. Public hearing scheduled for July 17, 2025.
This ordinance for improvements or expansion of a legal nonconforming sign that may be considered and shall require a permit and approval from the Planning Commission.
And this has a public hearing scheduled for July 17?
Yes. Any other discussion? Okay, on to ordinance 147-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 147-25 sponsored by Shannon Trainer. An ordinance amending section 242 of the codified ordinances.
So 242 of the codified ordinances has to do with our EMS services. The state audit, when they were here, they, I believe, did not just suggest, but said, "We need to have an ordinance in place, and the rates for our EMS services have to be approved by City Council." So this is to make us be in compliance with the state audit for now and moving forward. These rates are unchanged from the last few years, or maybe even since they started with the EMS services. The rates have been unchanged since that point. Is that correct? Okay, so these are the same rates that we've had in place. We're not trying to raise the rates. We just have to pass this piece of legislation so that we are in compliance with the state audit.
Any discussion? Okay, on to Resolution 148-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 148-25 sponsored by Greg Eads. Resolution revising job description. The street department is in need of revising several job descriptions.
Yep. So we've also reviewed these at the finance committee. There were some additional duties added. Most of these things were just cleaned up. A little bit of that was who reports to who, who reports to who for that chain of command. The finance committee did not have any objections to any of the wording on this, or all of these job descriptions. Pardon me.
Any discussion? Okay, on to Resolution 149-25. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 149-25 sponsored by John Stahl. A resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
There's a public hearing on this scheduled for July 17. This is the property of Betty Wilson in Lafayette for 289 single homes for senior citizens. in the burden for the schools. Interesting to see that go around developments, like Del Webb life, but even more elevated.
I have a question on this one, it's a very simple question, but what is the age that they are targeting to be a senior citizen? Do you?
I think it's fifty-five plus for this one. You know, so it's, it's an empty nester is how they profess it. But you know, the greatest competition in the community will be like Sovereign Village. So I understand the most lose, if you will, by having, you know, it directly compete with what I offer there. But I think competition is good, my product's not as good as what their product is, they'll win and I'll lose and what have you. I'm sixty-two plus, but I think they're going to be back.
Okay.
We're not asking for any other abatements or anything at this point on this?
No, it falls within, you know, what is, what is out there, it's just, you know, I think the one interesting thing that comes in is Betty Wilson Road is narrow, right? Like we've got to make sure that we have a long-term plan for that. I think you'll see that we are thinking about traffic load within and just outside of the city as it pertains to that. No special requests, I guess, you know, bringing more housing opportunities to the community.
And this will be part of the NCA?
Yes, it will.
So we'll still get, will the city will still share in on the, those funds as it's, as said in the NCA?
Yeah, and it's a non-school tip, so the school will get full allocation, you know, I think it'll be very, very good for the community as well.
I'm sure, did you have a question, please? Or, oh, I didn't, I didn't hear it said.
Interestingly, I think myself in town sees a lot of the only two adjoining landowners, so this is literally in my backyard, so when it comes to public hearing, the only two affected parties are me and my mother-in-law. But I think it would be really meaningful for the city.
I'd like to point out to some of the younger folks, Cooper, that many of us, and that just barely over fifty-five, are going to be working for a lot of years, hopefully, to pay some income tax there, too.
The NCA also allow for expansion of the police department and fire department also. Some of the concerns you expressed.
John?
I read the paper, we're going to say you may not start till twenty-eight, is that just a possibility, or?
No, I'm contractually bound to get that product by July first, twenty twenty-six. So as soon as the, that's in the corn right now. As soon as the corn comes down, we'll start moving dirt, you know, provided that everything is approved by council and everybody's agreement. So dirt will start moving on July, you know, November, let's say, when the corn comes down, and we'll be turning the first houses over to them July first, you know, obviously weather and some of that, that'll happen July first. And the very first thing that this particular builder is going to do is spend four million dollars on improvements to the central community. So when they come in, they're really invested is what I'm getting at, right? Like this isn't, we're sort of thinking about maybe having a commitment to the community. They're going to buy, I forget the exact number, I'll know it before the third reading, but sixty-five or seventy homes, or sixty-five or seventy lots, day one. So they're going to put four million dollars into infrastructure, they're going to buy sixty-five or seventy lots, but they're going to develop. And those homes they expect to sell for five hundred thousand, and they're targeting that fifty-five plus. So like I think in any measure, this is an absolute, like almost perfect scenario for the community, because at least fire with the school with, like, it's just a win all across the board.
Unless you're commuting.
I was just curious, because we had a group, it'd be two years in September, came in wanting condos, apartments and things, et cetera, and they've yet to start on it. It seemed like everybody rushes in, wants it right away, but they, I don't know what happens.
Mr. Stahl, I hope you've seen the difference between some of those folks and myself, I don't think I've.
I know you promise what you do.
So London Landing is moving at a very, very aggressive pace, it will be sold out here probably yet this year. Johnson Street is moving at a very aggressive pace, the VR work is moving in right now, they'll start directing model homes within days, as soon as they get their building permits approved. M I homes will get theirs yet before the end of this year. And this is Kate Habanian, who is the eighteenth largest builder in the United States, they're going to, like, they're, they're literally putting millions of dollars down this year to make sure that this happens. So I'm not taking risk at lip service, and I won't subject the city to risk at lip service that it will happen. There's no, there's absolutely barring some apocalyptic scenario, there's nothing that's going to stop this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, on to ordinance 150-25. Got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 150-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt. An ordinance authorizing the city to enter into the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, SOPEC, executive execution and delivery of the agreement establishing SOPEC and approving the bylaws of SOPEC.
So this is just what it states, it's to enter into SOPEC and to agree their bylaws.
Any discussion?
There's another public hearing July seventeenth.
That one's for, yeah, for the next ordinance. Okay, on to ordinance 151-25. Got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 150-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt. An ordinance approving the plan of operation and governance of the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, SOPEC, electric aggregation program and for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electric aggregation program.
So this involves SOPEC also, it's agreeing to their plan of operation and governance, and then also joining, or joining the aggregation, aggregate for SOPEC. And that's a public hearing July seventeenth.
Any other discussion this evening?
Well, a couple of things. I don't think our ordinance is in this document that we're looking at. And then I just want to make sure, your correct name is what?
Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council is our legal name.
Okay.
Doing business as PBA, Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council.
Okay, because we see both names there.
Oh, yeah, it's a PBA.
So it's still SOPEC either way you go.
Same, I have to reiterate.
Okay.
What was the purpose for the name change?
We started out in Southeast Ohio, and then we went State High.
Also, as you've grown, you changed the name?
Yeah, it just changed two years ago.
Did I hear you say that you just picked up Rutland, Ohio?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's about eight hundred people live here, I believe.
Mays County.
Yeah, that's my home county.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
It was official as of today.
Okay.
Okay, on to new business, Resolution 152-25. Got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 152-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt. A resolution increasing appropriations. The Parks and Recreation Department need more funds to continue to operate the remainder of the year.
So this is twenty thousand dollars to be appropriated to the Parks and Recreation Department. Some of that is in relation to unexpected costs, and then also, I believe, other things that you would like to see done.
Yeah, we had numerous repairs ahead of us early in the season, as well as a few approvals that we did do, but in order to kind of smooth it over, allow us to do, if any more new programs come in, as well as our fall festival is coming up, and then as well as, you know, hopefully spruce up Cowling Park a little bit come winter time.
Is this enough, Landon, the twenty thousand for all you have on?
It should be enough yet.
Is there an emergency on this?
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 152-25 has passed. I moved to adopt, though, I'm sorry. You made a motion to adopt.
That was rich.
Motion of John's second.
All right, on to Resolution 153-25. Got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 153-25 sponsored by Shannon Trainor. A resolution increasing appropriations. The city council has recommended speed bumps and speed signs to alleviate speeding within the city.
So since Ms. Trainor's not here, the last committee this went to was finance, it's also been, I believe, through the service committee, is that correct? So I'll let you add to this. When it came to council or to the finance committee, the other committees already considered options or is currently considering options for traffic calming in residential areas, this was one of the options. Residents did come forward and ask measures to be taken. Safety Service Director Castle had input on this at our meeting. This specifically is to buy the speed signs, and what are movable speed bumps, that those could be moved. Mr. Anthony asked how many speed bumps are going to go throughout the city. This is what I believe, and I'll let, I'll let the other council members that are on the other committee go a little bit further, but I believe this is kind of a temporary look, and let's just see if this works. But I want them to fill us in a little bit more on that.
Yeah, me too.
Sure.
Yeah, I was talking with Mr. Long and maybe doing like a pilot program, and I know the police chief is out taking a date on it right now. And one of the things that is coming up is another stealth box, and I would probably make the motion that we don't get that, I don't think he needs that, maybe get some more speed bumps instead of the stealth box.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that legislation is coming up, but you'd asked about the stealth monitors. Basically, they're to monitor speed, and they're placed in unknown locations to get a realistic statistics as far as what kind of speeding is going on in a certain area.
Right now, there's one pointed at a stealth.
Are you talking to ones on portable wheels?
No, it's covert, I guess, a covert speed monitor. So people don't know where it is, so they don't adjust their speed. It can give you a realistic view of what kind of speeding is going on.
It's kind of like a black box off the side of the road.
It just blends in real well, and that's why they call it stealth, and it just takes data from this, the, how fast people are going.
So you had, pardon me, you would ask if there's a program in place, and that was what was brought up by the administration, they wanted a program in place, it's being worked on. We had information, you'd had information from Hilliard, it's pretty in-depth what they had, but one of the, one of the things on the stealth device was to gather that information. We only, we have one now, we can gather information in one place at one time, but if we have additional units, then we can move those around, and that should help, help whoever determine where these need to go, or where signs need to go, or any calming devices need to go.
Speed feedback signs could be, are mobile also, as well as the speed bumps.
Well, I don't think speed signs are the part of the answer, because you've got speed signs all over the place, people ignore them. So adding more, I don't know.
This shows your speed.
So, yeah, so this speed sign, yeah.
And I believe they say like slow down underneath its points or whatever.
So you're talking those type of speeds, not words?
Yeah, not, not just word speeding on the signs, yeah. Yeah, so almost like the trailer we have, but they're.
Yeah, but I think at finance, we talked about getting two of them and maybe just one more, they're like twelve hundred dollars a piece.
Well, I think the legislation is for five, I believe.
Five of what?
The feedback signs. And then three sets of.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was five of, five of the speed signs, those can be moved, they can be mounted to a pole, but they're not permanent, if there's another area that needs, we get complaints, we can put them there, and then also, and I believe, I believe they said even those signs will collect some data. No?
Yeah, the study did show that the speed feedback signs do help reduce speed, about comparable to the speed bumps. The speed bumps helped reduce the number of accidents. But anyway, we talked about having a criteria of some kind to decide, determine where those would go and whether they're warranted in certain areas or not.
So this will all come at a later date?
Yeah, that, we're still kind of looking at developing what kind of criteria to look at them. And the stealth monitors would help show whether those are warranted in certain areas. That would allow for an objective placement instead of preferential placement.
Yeah, and that's, and I'm glad they brought that up, that was something that I really kept bringing up, was who's, who's going to do, who's going to pick these streets? Because, you know, we talk about Jacob Lane, right? This shouldn't be done on who's the loudest, right? There's been talks for years of they need to be on Tolland, because there's no sidewalks down there, and during baseball season, you might as well stay away from that place, especially this year when we couldn't use the other parking. So, you know, trying to figure out where, I don't, mathematically, scientifically, however you want to say it, with these stealth boxes that say, okay, if it's this many cars going this much over the speed limit, you know, they all get points and there's some kind of rating system, and then that's where we choose where we put them. It's not just going to be who's the loudest, or who has, who lives on the street, or who has friends that live on the street, like, that's what I want to make sure that we get completely away from, and that it. It's not just going to be who's the loudest, or who has, who lives on the street, or who has friends that live on the street, like, that's what I want to make sure that we get completely away from, and that it's done by numbers and calculations.
Okay, any other discussion on one fifty-three?
The only diff, the only thing I'm gonna bring up is this is to increase the appropriations for the street department. It's going to come out of their fund. We talked about this prior to the meeting, so it's an appropriation increase, not just taking out of what they already have.
On to resolution one fifty-four dash twenty-five. Can I get motion read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one fifty-four dash twenty-five, sponsored by Andrew Hit. A resolution increasing appropriations. City would like to purchase stealth monitors to monitor traffic patterns and speed throughout the city.
So this was the stealth monitors to covertly monitor speed of vehicles in certain, in different areas. And the, the police department has one currently, this was to add three. We did get an email from the chief saying that that was probably an over order of stealth monitors. He felt like the one monitor was probably enough, that the additional was for cities that are maybe four or five times the size of London. But I think he was gonna give us some more feedback on that.
Want a minute to just one, instead of more than one? Rex.
Here's the thing, you can appropriate the money, he doesn't have to buy if it's four. But then if he gets later on and he decides, really, you know, maybe I should have had four, he's got the money to do it. I haven't got, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the chief on this, but I don't have the opinion that one's enough, to be honest with you.
The appropriation is eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not a huge amount of money either.
Any other discussion? Okay, on to ordinance one fifty-five dash twenty-five. Can I get motion read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one fifty-five dash twenty-five, sponsored by Shannon Trainer. An ordinance adjusting the rate of curb assistance.
So, we'll discuss this. The curb assistance currently is like, it's around two dollars and fifty cents a month. I think it was increased a little bit.
Three, three dollars?
He says about three dollars a month, or he's trying to buy something at auction, I'm not sure. But it was, so roughly three dollars a month for the curb assistance. If you are disabled, if you are sixty-five or older, you don't pay for that now, but you do have to ask for the stickers. They don't just give those to people if they don't ask. There are plenty of people, it was brought up at the meeting, there's plenty of people that are sixty-five or older, they feel okay, they don't feel that they need the assistance, so they don't ask for it. They want to change the rate, and I'm trying to see if we have that in there. There's, there's an exhibit, but was that eight dollars? Twelve? Is that what we, is that what we agreed upon at the meeting, was twelve?
Yep.
Okay.
What I remember, that I'm old.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't have that in front of me, but I'm sure you're right, and I don't have access to Shannon's minutes for that. So it is proposed to take this to twelve dollars a month for, for those that just choose to have curb assistance.
I guess part of the reason for it was because of the number, or the time involved with curb assistance and expansion of London and.
You know, this was brought to me by the employees of the street department, and they're trying to find ways to be more efficient, to be able to get their routes done in timely fashion, and they said that that really does slow them down on getting their route done by going and getting those wherever they're located, bringing them to the truck, dumping them, and then taking them back. And, and I'm like, yeah, but it's for the handy, and they go, no, no, no. It's people that are fully capable under sixty-five, because it's so cheap, they're going ahead, it's three dollars a month, and I'm like, wow, that is really cheap. I didn't realize how much it was. I thought it was three dollars a week, it's three dollars a month to have that service.
So that's where the twelve dollars came up with, if you want to still do this, it'd be three dollars, pretty much average three dollars extra on your bill per pickup. And, you know, we want to make it abundantly clear that if you're sixty-five or older or disabled, you're allowed to still get it for free. This, this will not affect the free, we're still going to take care of those people. This is for people under sixty-five and able-bodied, that it would go from three to twelve dollars, and if they want to pay that amount, but like you said, it's going to make them more effective, more efficient, be able to get through their route a lot faster. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, if they're trying to save time and money, the last five, or the last six weeks, five of the time that they've come to our association, they have dumped the recyclables and the regular trash into one, at one time. Now, the reason why they do that is because, A, one, diapers, one, the trucks are always broken down, or one, and they don't have the manpower all the time to do that. So I don't understand when you're trying to raise the rate of the curb assistance by that much, because it takes up too much time to get the guy off the truck to go put it up a driveway versus right now, they're doing, they're putting all the garbage at one time on the street, recyclable and regular trash. So that's saving time right there.
Exactly, and that's why we're doing it. Because if we don't, because of either machines being broke down, which we've got a streets department person right here, he can attest to our equipment breakage.
You mean sanitation?
For sanitation.
You've referred to it as street twice now.
Sorry, Kevin. He, he knows me. Anyway, I've approved him to do that, because in order to pick up trash and sand, and recycling, you have to run the route twice. That's twice as long it takes to get it done. And we are operating with, with a staff that unfortunately we have to because of cost restraints. If we want to increase employees and buy new equipment and stuff, we're gonna have to raise rates, and we're gonna, so we've got to come up with ways to be able to get this job done, to where we don't have to count on overtime to be able to get it done, or put it off till the next week. We had a few Fridays where we worked really late on Friday, had to put in overtime, because we don't want people's trash sitting there over the weekend. So we're trying our best to try to get the routes as efficient as possible.
So that means seven months. In the past, the city had a program for recyclable and regular trash. It, it picked up at two different times, it'd be taken to the, to the sanitation department area and dumped into two different piles, I assume. And then at some point, those two piles would be taken somewhere. Now, when it goes to the sanitation department, and the truck's backed up, and inside the truck is recyclable and regular trash, when that truck hauls that away, does that all go to the landfill? Or does it go somewhere where they have to spread this out and go through it?
No, it goes to the landfill.
Which costs us a little bit more money.
A little bit, but know that, you know, recycling, that costs us quite a bit of money, too.
Why don't we have recycling then, if it doesn't cost?
Well, I'll tell you, that's been brought up by some people. That has definitely been brought up by some people to possibly look at that and go just straight trash. So, and then, and also, I just want to add to a point that, that you brought up about the double pickups. A lot of those times is when, a holiday, right? So there's a Monday holiday, or we just had Juneteenth. So now they're doing, trying to do an extra, an extra route on a day, right? So they're doing five days and four days, and like I said, you know, we don't have a superintendent for sanitation right now, so that puts them down a person. You know, we're, the street department has been very good, and I, I know who I'm saying, to send people to the sanitation department to try to help out, but sometimes we can't send those people over there. So, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can with what we got, and I appreciate the sanitation department, those men and women work very hard, and we're just trying to be more effective and efficient, and if we can get some of these people off of these able-bodied people in their twenties and thirties that don't want to walk their trashcan down and pay the extra three dollars, if we can get them to say, you know what, I'm not going to pay twelve for it and do it themselves, that will help speed things up. And hopefully that will give us extra time so we can run both, run the route twice.
Were we paying for recyclables in the past, to where it got to go? Once the sanitation era, did it go somewhere, and were we paying for that service?
Define we, who are you saying? We as the citizens, or we as the city?
We as, you as the city.
Yes, the city is paying a fee. When this was all first developed, the city was supposed to get money for recycling. Well, somehow or another, that got shifted from we didn't, we would get money to where we had to pay to haul it off. Okay? Number two, recycling companies are very picky. If they come and see that can, that big container with the recycling in it, and they see one piece of trash in there, they're like, that's now trash, it goes to the landfill. So we've wasted all the time going and collecting that, because there are certain routes, I'm not going to say who they are, but there are certain routes that put trash in both their recycling and their trashcan. The guys, all they know is black's recycling, red is trash. So when they come and they dump it in those things, you can't really see it until after it's dumped, and they can't dig down in there, root it, and take it out. So now they've contaminated their recycling load, and it's got to be dumped in trash. So we've got numerous problems with recycling.
So how serious is the city going away from this recycling and just have everything trashed, to where it takes one time for the truck to come by and pick up the trash, whether it's recyclable or not?
I believe.
Because it gets all mixed into the truck anyway.
You're absolutely right.
That discussion has been discussed, where's my, numerous times, we've been discussing it. So we're putting numbers together to see what, what the numbers are going to shake out for us, but, yeah, Kevin.
It takes one recycle can to have diapers, pizza boxes, and there's parts of pizza boxes that are not recycled with the oil and stuff in them. That's all unrecycled. Kids' plastic toys, just because it's a plastic toy doesn't mean it's recyclable. So that automatically contaminates the whole truck.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough business to do. So we're working on it.
I got just one other question. It seems like we're having trouble getting people to work for the sanitation department. Is because of the hourly rate? What is the problem?
Superintendent. No, we're full staff. It's that, we're full staff, but we're short a superintendent. So that, that person would go out on routes and would do the bulk, right? When somebody calls in and says, I have a bulk pickup, I want to do my free bulk pickup, that's what the superintendent was doing. So now we're having to pull somebody off of a truck, right, and have them go do that also. So we're, I, I would say we're down one employee, but, but we're full, fully staff, quote unquote, except for the superintendent, so we've got to get that figured out.
Well, I have sat in a lot of these city council meetings, and when it comes time to trash, it has been reported that we have to use the street department to help, to help out the sanitation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Gather up.
Right, well, so if somebody's sick, we had an incident where somebody was sick and somebody had vacation, right? So now we're down a couple people, and so that's when we send the, the street people over. And like I said, we're down the superintendent, which, you know, is a man down for them. So, excuse me, we do have to send somebody over there, but, you know, especially when vacations start hitting, right?
Well, looking at the future, you will have to hire more people.
You're absolutely right. You're, you're absolutely right.
Probably more reviews.
Yeah, and that's another thing that, that we've talked about, just like we talked about with fire and police, is yes, we're going to have to expand that also. And as, you know, those revenues start coming in, right, that's a different revenue fund than, than tax dollars, right? It's an enterprise fund. So when, as we're starting to get the, the more people, yes, you're absolutely right, we're going to need to get more trucks and more people in that department.
So why do we need to raise the curb assistance from three to twelve bucks a month, or whatever, when the problem can be solved by picking up the trash all at once?
Kevin, would you like to address this gentleman's question?
There, there's a, one hundred percent, there are people who need it, sixty-five and older, handicapped. There are some of the people that will take their trash out and send it in the curb when we go out in the mornings, so we'll take the can back up, no questions asked. But there are some places around the city, I know of one, that they're not handicapped, it's more of like an apartment place now, they have cans, and then we have to get out of the truck, go walk up to their place, bring the cans, empty them, because the person told me that they don't have, their people that live there won't bring the trash out. So we let the trash sit there, let it build up for weeks at a time, and smell.